Maybe we'll just say a quick prayer before we start. Lord, we thank you for this evening. Thank you for a great week. A week for some with challenges, for others with more good news. But in all things, we give thanks to you because you are our God. You only have good things in mind for us. And therefore, we trust in you regardless of the circumstances. Thank you, Lord, for our sister Araba. We know that she's struggling with a health problem at the moment, Father. And we send forth your healing power in Jesus' name. Lord, that you may fill her body from head to toe, that she may experience the mighty power of the Lord Jesus Christ in bringing healing to her in Jesus' name. Father, even as we start this Bible study, we ask for your wisdom. We ask for your peace. We ask for the tranquility required, Father, to be able to break your word. Give us the insight. The Bible says the entrance of your word brings light. Father, let your word bring light to us. Let us gain understanding of the word that you have for us in Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, so today we're going to be talking about the end times as we promised that we would do. So we are going to be talking about the end times. And why is it necessary to know about the end times? It's necessary for a few reasons. The first one being that somebody asked that question, you know, and they wanted to know more about it. So that's a very good reason for us to go into the topic. But another important reason is that it's part of the gospel. You see, the end time, the message about the end times, it's not separate from the rest of the gospel at all. What we have done over the years is to fragment the word of God and to carve out something called the message of salvation. And that's what we preach to people. So we might say, "For all have sinned and fallen short of the glory of God, and therefore, they are all justifiable by grace, etc., etc., and then whosoever shall call upon the Lord shall be saved." And we've carved out this neat message that we now preach to unbelievers. But when you read the Bible, you discover that's not how Jesus or the apostles preached. They understood the entirety of Christ's message, and then they put that message to people in different forms depending on the need. Now, part of that message was that Jesus was coming back. Jesus was coming back. Without the message about Jesus coming back, there's really no consequence to our Christianity. So what if you want to be a Christian? Maybe someone else wants to be a Buddhist. Maybe another person wants to be a Hindu or whatever. They want to practice Hinduism. Now, if there is no day of reckoning, if there is no end time scenario, then honestly, it doesn't matter. It really doesn't matter. Anybody can practice what they want. And I've had this said to me before, that, "Look, all the religions are the same. What matters is, you know, whatever works for you, and then you go with it." And that thing is, could be, it could be argued that it was the truth, except there's one thing, it's a day of reckoning. You see, if there was no such a thing as an exam, then there would be no good student and bad student. The student that is intelligent and, you know, rattling away a lot of the material that the teacher taught versus the student who wasn't even paying attention. What's the difference? It doesn't matter if there's no exam. Because there will be no way at the end of the day to tell. There will be no consequence to the one who learned. There will be no consequence to his much learning. And therefore, we might as well all go away and just enjoy ourselves. Because what's the point? The reason why it matters is that there's going to be an end time. There's going to be a day of reckoning. The day of the exam is going to arrive. And when that day arrives, it will suddenly be clear. Those who built on the sand and those who built on the rock, there will be a difference. This is why it's important for us to not just understand the message about the end times, the coming of the Lord, but it's also important that we include that as part of the gospel. It is an essential part of the gospel. And as we will see very soon, we are not just, you know, it's just as a case of maybe even Jesus' disciples including that in the gospel. Even in the Old Testament, they included it. So let's, let's go straight to the Bible. Now, why is it important to study eschatology? The end time featured prominently in Jesus' and his disciples' teachings. So why is it important to study eschatology? And eschatology is simply the study of the end times. That's a big Greek word. It's the study of the end times. Now, Jesus taught 15 parables about the time of reckoning. The parable of the talents. You know how we talk about how that he gave this person one talent, another two talents, two talents, sorry, and another five talents? Well, guess what? At the end of a certain period, there was a time of reckoning. That time of reckoning is what we are talking about. So Jesus' parables were showing that there would, there would be a day of reckoning. You're given the talents to work with, and then there's a day of reckoning. And that day is what we are talking about. There were lots of parables that Jesus taught, lots of messages that he preached around this subject. It was an extremely important one. And as he neared the time of his death, his disciples came around and said, "Okay, you've been talking about this since so long. Now tell us, when will it actually happen?" And we'll go to the passage in the Bible where that question was asked and how Jesus answered it. So Jesus linked many of his teachings to his second coming and the judgment that would follow. Old Testament prophecies about God's salvation were bundled together with the ones that spoke about his second coming. The ones, so you see salvation bundled together with a second coming. In the Old Testament, they didn't know that there would be at least a couple of thousand years in between the two. They saw that as just one complete, one event. But now we know, you know, that it's not. When you're looking at prophecies, you've got to remember that the people in those days, they were prophesying, prophesied, prophesying, sorry, about very distant events. Now, when something is far off in the distance, you don't get to see all the features, yeah? So even a building, a huge building, if you're standing very far from it, it will look like a little speck. You won't know which part is the roof, which part. You wouldn't know how many windows it has. You wouldn't know the different features. That's draw closer, you discover, "Oh my God, maybe this building, I thought it was a, it was a castle, and actually it's a school. You know, I thought it was a church, and actually it's a theater." You know, as you get closer, you don't get, you get more details. Now, prophets like Isaiah, they prophesied about the end times at a time when the nation Israel hadn't even gone into captivity yet. Isaiah prophesied about a time that would come. And so he didn't have all the fine details. Neither did the other prophets like Joel and the rest. They didn't have all the fine details. They locked everything together. That's what they saw. But they saw all of that as a great, and, you know, a great coming of the Lord, a great day of the Lord. The Lord was coming to do something mighty on the world, in the world, and they prophesied about it, okay? But as the time drew nearer, more understanding was gained. As the image drew closer, they could see the different features. And so those who then talked about it were able to talk about it with more precision. They could talk about the different features, the different things that they could see, okay? So that's what you're going to see as we, as we move along. The gospel is the good news of God's salvation for all, all of mankind. And we have to ask salvation from what? It's from eternal damnation, which is what's going to happen at the end. So when we tell people to be saved, sometimes I think we are gradually missing out what they are supposed to be saved from. What are people supposed to be saved from? They are supposed to be saved from eternal damnation. People need to know that a day of reckoning is coming. And it is because that day is coming that we all need to be prepared. It's not about scaring people into, I remember years ago, you know, we all used to do that scare people into heaven. No, that's not what it is. The gospel is the good news of God's salvation. But sometimes there's a need to remind people why salvation is necessary, okay? Why is salvation necessary? It's because a day of reckoning is coming. So our preaching of the gospel is not complete unless we let people know what they are escaping from or what they are supposed to be escaping from. So a few things that we need to know as we lay the foundation for this particular topic. The world as we know it has an expiry date on it. The world has an expiry date. Things are not going to continue as they are forever. A time will come when things will change. You all remember that there was a grace period in Noah's days. God promised that the earth as it was would only continue for 120 years more. Man had 120 years to repent. In the days of Abraham, this is something that is so easy to miss. When Abraham arrived in the land, the promised land, you know, he then discovered that he couldn't actually possess it. He lived in a tent. Then in Genesis, chapter 15, the Lord revealed to Abraham. He said, "The iniquities of the Amorites are not yet full." We'll talk about it in more detail. In other words, the time for judgment is not yet. I am offering the people, the Amorites, a grace period. The Amorites were some of the Canaanites that lived in the, in the promised land. And God said, "Their sin is not yet full, and therefore, I'm giving them a grace period. But in the fourth generation, your descendants will return and possess the land." What God was saying is, he was giving them up to four generations to repent. The Canaanites who lived in the promised land were given four generations, 400 years to repent and to turn around from their sins. And when they didn't, obviously, Israelites came and executed the judgment of the Lord upon them. The exact date of the Lord's coming, no one knows. However, Jesus taught there would be signs predating the end, and he warned his disciples to be prepared. So what will happen in the end? What will happen at the time of the end? There will be gradual, followed by a marked escalation of signs. What are some of the signs? Wars, natural disasters, epidemics and pandemics. We've had one recently. There, three things will happen to people as we approach the end. Wickedness will abound. The love of many will grow cold. What does it, pardon me, what does it mean that the love of many will grow cold? It means that people will become insensitive to other people's needs. They will become insensitive to sin. Self-centeredness will abound. People will do what works for them. They won't care too much about what works for someone else. As our selfishness increases, you will see more and more wicked acts being done to people. Then many deceivers will arise, false prophets, people claiming to be somebody and leading many astray. That's also going to be a sign. Now, if you live in this part of the world, you might think that, you know, the time is really, really at the very door because you will, you know, we have so many deceivers around today, and the love of people is growing cold, is growing cold, okay? Another important sign, if we find this in Daniel, chapter 12, verse 4. Knowledge will increase. Travel, people will go to and fro. Travel will become easier, okay? Man will reach the peak of his abilities. Mankind will reach the peak of his ability. When you look at the technological advancements that we've had since 1940, it is mind-boggling because it is many, 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 many times greater, more than what we had 2,000 years before. I mean, look at the time it took to even invent the wheel, the time it took to invent chariots, the time it took to invent motorized vehicles. You know, man went thousands of years before he could invent an engine that could, an engine that could work by itself and didn't need to, you know, to rely on animals, beasts of burdens and things like that. Look at the time it took. But now, not only have we moved on to, you know, not only do we have cars, now we are moving to electric cars. Who knows what we are going to be inventing in the future? Knowledge is increasing at a fast rate, fast pace. And also, what's happening is this. Because we are building on the knowledge that we have, and we, we have the means of recording. Remember that previous generations, before the printing press was invented, if you wanted a book, you had to get a scribe to sit down and copy it for you. Copy it out for you. That took him years, sometimes, of work. The Bible's, you know, copied it out. And this, and they're making it very expensive. How many scribes were there? How many books could they copy out? You see? So knowledge, even if somebody discovered something, they couldn't just scribble things down and pass it on. But our generation, very, very easy. You can publish a book like that. If any of you want to publish a book, it is very, very easy. Amazon has made it easy for anybody, anybody, literally, to write a book. You can put it out there and people will be reading it. Your ideas can be collated and left to the next generation easily. What that means is that knowledge is increasing at a fast rate. The next generation doesn't have to reinvent the wheel. They can easily latch on to whatever the previous generation had discovered and work with it, run with it. So as, you know, as time passes, what we're going to see is an escalation. The speed with which these advancements will happen will even increase. It will all go much, much, at a much faster rate. Okay, so now let's look at some Old Testament prophecies and how they were linked, how salvation and the end time scenario were linked together. This is from Joel, chapter 2. "And it shall come to pass afterward, that I will pour out my spirit on all flesh. Your sons and your daughters shall prophesy; your old men shall dream dreams; your young men shall see visions; and also on my men servants and on my maid servants I will pour out my spirit in those days; and I will show wonders in the heavens and in the air, blood and fire and pillars of smoke. The sun shall be turned into darkness and the moon into blood before the coming of the great and awesome day of the Lord; and it shall come to pass that whosoever or whoever calls on the name of the Lord shall be saved." This, Joel, chapter 28, sorry, verse 28 to 32. Peter quoted this passage. You remember when the Holy Spirit came upon the church on the day of Pentecost? And people wondered why they were behaving as they were, and they seemed like they were drunk? Peter quoted Joel, chapter 2. He said, let me read from, let me read from verse 14. Acts, chapter 2, verse 4, from verse 14. "But Peter, standing up with the levelling, raised his voice and said to the men of Judea and all who dwell in Jerusalem, 'Let this be known to you and heed my words; for these are not drunk as you suppose, since it is only the third hour of the day.' But this is what was spoken of by the prophet Joel. And it shall come to pass in the last day," says God, "that I will pour out my spirit on all flesh. Your sons and your daughters shall prophesy; your young men shall see visions; your old men shall dream dreams; and on my men servants and on my maid servants I will pour out my spirit in those days; and it shall prophesy. I will show wonders in heaven above and signs in the earth beneath; blood and fire vapor of smoke; the sun shall, the sun shall be turned into darkness and the moon into blood before the coming of the great and awesome day of the Lord; and it shall come to pass that whoever calls on the name of the Lord shall be saved." Acts, chapter 2, verse 14 to verse 21. Have you noticed the same passage that Joel prophesied, Peter quoted? But I want you to notice some minor details here. It says here, "the last days." "It shall come to pass in the last days." When we go to Joel's prophecy, it says, "And it shall come to pass afterward." We noticed afterward. It's kind of a phenomenon I've noticed in the Bible whereby those who live closer to the fulfillment of the prophecy, almost it's like they put the prophecy into context. They help what the person who saw it earlier couldn't see. All of the details couldn't tell when it was going to happen because Peter writes about it, that the prophets, they wondered what times they were prophesying about, and it was told them that it was nothing to do with their times. But Peter, who lived in those times or nearer the times, could see things more clearly, and he changes it, and he says, "in the last days." Showing you that we are now in the last days. If 2,000 years ago, Peter considered his time the last days, then you can be more certain that we are in the last days. But it's a very strange last days because they are the last days of grace. There is a grace period that we are enjoying. And the danger about grace period is that sometimes it feels like there's nothing happening. That's why in, in Noah's days, people were eating, drinking, giving in marriage, just living normal lives until the door of the earth was shut. And then suddenly, it was too late. So that's how it is. It was then. That's the nature of grace period. And that's the period that we're living in. It has lasted hours. That's lasted 120 days. Us has lasted 2,000 years. We're still in it. And it feels like it's never going to happen. But that's, that's dangerous to think that way. Of course, this doesn't apply to the rest of those of us on the panel, on the, on the platform. We've come here because we want to study about the Lord. We want to know about the Lord. We want to know more. We want to discover his ways. But this is about so that we understand what's coming, can share it with people. This is also so that we may have a sense of urgency, you know? If there is something that God has put in your heart to do, that will change someone else's life. Don't postpone it. Don't leave it till later. Don't. Because, yes, the Lord may delay his coming for another 2,000 years. Who knows? The difference is you and I don't have 2,000 years. Whether the Lord delays it by 1,000 or 5,000 years, we have a limited period that we're going to be living on this earth. And the people that we minister to also have a limited period. So this should urge us to think, oh, I've got, there's got to be some urgency here. Whatever it is God has put on your heart to do for him, don't delay. Do it. Now, going back to what Joel wrote and Peter quoted, have you noticed that at the end, it says, "And it shall come to pass that whoever calls on the name of the Lord shall be saved." But before then, it says, "The moon will turn into blood; the sun shall be turned into darkness." Note these signs because we are going to come across them repeatedly in Scripture. We're going to come across them repeatedly. They are signs marking the end. They are signs marking the end. And yet, what does Peter do, or Joel actually, because Peter was just quoting Joel? Joel lumps it together with the time when you call upon the Lord and you are saved. Remember that the time when Jesus appears, it will be too late to call upon him in order to be saved. It will be too late. Salvation, now is the time of salvation. Now is the time of deliverance. It will be too late then. But it says here, "Anyone who calls on the name of the Lord shall be saved" because it's talking about salvation and linking it with things that are going to happen in the future. Isaiah linked salvation with judgment. Let's read about it. "The Spirit of the Lord God is upon me because the Lord has anointed me to preach good tidings to the poor. He has sent me to heal the broken-hearted, to proclaim liberty to the captives, and the opening of prison to those who are bound to proclaim the acceptable year of the Lord and the day of vengeance of our God." Do you remember that Jesus quoted this passage when he went to his hometown of Nazareth? He went to his hometown. They didn't believe him. They thought, "This carpenter's son, when did he become a Messiah?" You know, they didn't believe him. Jesus stood up and he quoted, "The Spirit of the Lord is upon me because he has anointed me to preach the gospel to the poor. He has sent me to heal the broken-hearted, to proclaim liberty to the captives and recovery of sight to the blind; to set at liberty those who are oppressed to proclaim the acceptable year of the Lord." I want you to notice a slight difference. When you do a Bible study, please pay attention to passages. When you're comparing two passages, please pay attention. I've highlighted, "and the day of vengeance of our God." You see, it was going to proclaim two things, acceptable year of the Lord and the day of vengeance. That's what Isaiah prophesied in Isaiah, chapter 61, verses 1 and 2. But Jesus, when he quoted it, he left out the day of vengeance. Why? Jesus is closer to the fulfillment, and he is showing you that the day of vengeance is not going to happen immediately. So he only quoted up to the point where it was relevant, and he left out this bit. But this bit hasn't yet been fulfilled because it's coming. This is why I'm saying that the message is one. The message is one. Jesus quoted this bit for us to show us that God has given us the acceptable year of the Lord. The year the Lord is talking about is not 365 days. He's talking about a period. Just as what the Bible talks about, the day of the Lord is not talking about one day. He's talking about a period, okay? So there is a period of vengeance coming, but which Isaiah prophesied about, which Jesus left out when he was talking to his his kinsmen in, in Nazareth. But later, in Matthew, chapter 24, Jesus will talk about the day of vengeance, okay? John the Baptist talked about the coming judgment. "The voice of one crying in the wilderness prepared the way of the Lord. Make his paths straight. Every valley shall be filled, and every mountain and hill brought low; the crooked places shall be made straight, and the rough ways smooth; and all flesh shall see the salvation of God." Then he said to the multitudes that came to, came out to be baptized by him, "Brood of vipers, who warned you to flee from the wrath to come?" Look, "from the wrath to come." "Brood of vipers, who warned you to flee from the wrath to come?" John was already prophesying about some wrath that was coming. "Therefore, bear fruits worthy of repentance, and do not begin to say to yourselves, 'We have Abraham as our father; for I say to you that God is able to raise up children to Abraham from these stones; and even now the ax is laid to the root of the trees; therefore, every tree which does not bear good fruit is cut down and thrown in the fire.'" This is John the Baptist, John the Baptist, sorry, prophesying about Jesus, talking about Jesus, what Jesus was coming to do at the end. He was warning them about what was coming at the end, even though in the intervening period, they were going to see the salvation of the Lord because he said, "All flesh shall see the salvation of God." See? Now, if you want to study end times, so this is, these are, you know, tips to help you do a study of the end times yourself. There are two key passages that you want to refer to. Matthew, chapter 24, Luke, chapter 21. Very important passages. Then there are other passages that you must be linked to these ones, okay? So those two. Now, the other passages that we must link them to are found in the book of Daniel from chapter 7 onwards. In fact, even chapter 2, the book of Isaiah's Dream offers In fact, even chapter two, the book of Isaiah's dream offers some commentary on the end times. Isaiah has a number of prophecies scattered all over. Zechariah also has prophecies scattered all over, particularly chapter twelve or chapter fourteen. Then in some of the other parts of the gospels, Matthew twenty five. You remember the parable of the seven, the seven, the, not the seven, the, the five wise virgins, the five foolish virgins, yeah, the ten virgins. Matthew twenty five, Luke chapter twelve, there's a very important passage there. A parable Jesus told about an unfaithful servant, that's about end times. Luke seventeen, you know, and Luke nineteen, there's a tiny, a tiny verse there. Mark thirteen also talks about it. In the epistles, first as a longians, chapter four and chapter five, second as a longians, chapter two. Second Peter, chapter three, and of course, the book of Revelation. Book of Revelation is unique because God allows John to see events play out. You know, almost like a video, so he was able to see and provide us with a narrative, a commentary on what was actually happening or what is going to happen. Now let's study some of the passages, we're going to look at Matthew chapter twenty four. In Matthew chapter twenty four, Jesus' disciples approached him with three questions. Let's read about it. Then Jesus went out and departed from the temple, and his disciples came up to show him the buildings of the temple. And Jesus said to them, do you, do you not see all these things? Assuredly I say to you, not one stone shall be left here upon another that shall not be thrown down. Now as he sat on the mount of Olives, the disciples came to him privately saying, tell us, when will these things be and what will be the sign of your coming? End of the end of the age, Matthew twenty four, verse one to three. Sometimes when you read the Bible, you come across what seems like different accounts about the same event. And this is one other instance. Matthew, in his gospel, he likes to group things together. So the sermon on the mount, which starts from Matthew chapter five all the way to chapter seven, is not one necessarily one sermon that was preached. It's a collection of Jesus' sayings, okay? So you have the Beatitudes, and then there's a collection of Jesus' sayings. And when you go to other gospels, you'll find that those sayings have been scattered and have been, essentially you'll discover that they were said, or you know, Jesus taught them at different times. Matthew collated all of them, put them in one place. And Matthew does that a lot, okay? All of the warnings that were given to the Pharisees were put in one place. The parables grouped together, okay? Which makes it very easy to study. So when Jesus, when Matthew says that Jesus' disciples came to him with three questions, it's very possible that at that particular instance, they came with two. But another instance, they came with one and Matthew put them all together. I don't know for sure if that's what happened, but that's possible. So that, if in case you're wondering, because when we get to Luke, you'll discover that they asked two questions, but in Matthew, they asked three questions. So our three questions are, when the temple, when would the temple be destroyed? When will be the sign of your coming and the end of the age? Clearly, the disciples were linking the three things together. To their minds, this, I mean, something as magnificent as the temple, which was, you know, a formidable building for, you know, of, of that time. To think that this thing could be pulled down, if they couldn't, it could not fit into their heads that, that scenario. That scenario just didn't, couldn't find space there, because how, how could something like that happen? Surely that might be, must be at the end. But that's not exactly what happened. Then as some spoke of the temple, now let's look at Luke's account. So the same thing that we've just read in Matthew, Luke's account sounds like this. Then as some spoke of the temple, how it was adorned with beautiful stones and donations, he said, those things which you see, the days will come in which not one stone shall be left upon another that shall not be thrown down. So they asked him, saying, teacher, but when will these things be? And what will be the sign, what, what sign will there be when these things are about to take place? You see, here there are two questions. And the questions, both questions are really related to the temple. You said the temple is going to be pulled down, is going to be pulled down. When will that happen and what will be the indication that is about to happen? But when you go to Matthew, they have more precise questions about Jesus' return to the earth, the temple being pulled down, the time of the end. You see, this is why I believe that Matthew grouped things together there to get those questions. When you read Luke, what you'll discover is that Luke gives you a chronological account. So Luke would place Jesus' teachings within the context, the situational context. Whereas Matthew, not necessarily, he would take a teaching and just link it together with another teaching because they are on the same topic. So now let's look at the signs that Jesus said would precede his coming. Remember that the disciples want to know about when the, the temple would be pulled down as well. That question is answered by Luke, that question is not answered in Matthew specifically. Jesus' first warning was this, take heed that you do not be deceived. For many will come in my name saying, I am he, and the time has drawn near. Therefore do not go after them. But when you hear of wars and commotions, do not be terrified. For these things must come to pass first, but the end will not come immediately. Then he said to them, nation will rise against nation, and look against, sorry, and kingdom against kingdom. And there will be great earthquakes in various places and famines and pestilences. And the pestilence, by the way, is epidemic. And there will be fearful sights and great signs from heaven. Luke twenty one, eight to eleven. And they will say to you, look here, look there, do not go after them. Or follow them, for as the lightning that flashes out of one part under the heaven shines to the other part under heaven, so also the son of man will be in his day, Luke seventeen, twenty-three to twenty-four. Both Luke and Matthew talk about how that the, the coming of the Lord will be preceded by people posing as Christ. Some will say that they are Christ, some will say that they know, they have special knowledge about Christ. That bit we already, we already encountered right now. This passage is from Matthew, Matthew twenty four says, then if anyone says to you, look here, look, here is the Christ, there, do not believe it. False priests and false prophets will rise and show great signs and wonders to deceive, if possible, even the elect. See, I have told you beforehand. Therefore, if they say to you, look, he's in the desert, do not go out or look. Or look, he is in the inner rooms, do not believe it. That's Matthew twenty four from verse twenty-three to verse twenty-six. There will be signs in the sky, immediately after the tribulation of those days, the sun will be darkened. Do you remember what we talked about, the sun and the moon? The sun will be darkened and the moon will not give its light. The stars will fall from heaven. Mark says the stars will fall from heaven like figs, they will drop like figs. And the powers of the heavens will be shaken. There will be fearful signs everywhere at the very end. Then the sign of the son of man will appear in heaven. So I've got this diagram here to help us all picture what we're going to, what's going to happen based on Matthew and Luke's prophecy. False prophets, wars, rumors of wars. These things, my impression is that, you know, they are early warning signs. And Jesus likened the suffering of the end times to birth pains. And the ladies that are on the platform will probably acknowledge that birth pains, when they start, you get one contraction, then, you know, then time lapses before another contraction. And then as the time draws near, the contractions begin to cluster together, they become more frequent. Okay, when the, when they are rare, when the contractions are rare, doctors don't rush because they know it's not going to happen anytime soon. It's when they begin to cluster together, that's when you begin to think, okay, this thing could come any time soon. It's going to be the same with the, for, for the end times. So as the different events are spaced out in time, people are going to say, oh, this is, this is just natural. As a matter of fact, I went and did some research some time back, looking at the number of earthquakes per year. And I wanted to know, because of what the Bible says, whether we are having more earthquakes now than we were some time back. And I discovered that there was a time when it went up, but actually it has dropped a little bit. So it's not a case of lots of earthquakes and things like that happening. So somebody can look at that, look at the evidence and say, ignore it. But what's going to happen actually is that these are early warning signs. He that had ears, let him hear, early warning signs, they can be easily ignored. And then we'll go into another phase where the, you will see more signs. And then we'll go into another phase, even more signs, and then the signs will begin to cluster together. In other words, instead of just having this or this, you're going to see this, 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 all of them clustering together as we draw near. And when you see them really clustering together and intensifying, know that time is approaching. But even then, it's not the end yet. Because before the very end, you're going to see cosmic changes. They will call it meteorites or things like that falling to the ground. They will be dropping like figs according to what the Bible says. The powers of the heavens shall be shaken. There will be fearful signs, the Bible says the sea will be roaring, that's referring to tsunamis. All these signs will be clustering together as we approach there. There will be a time of intense suffering, which must lead you and me to ask this question. Lord, why? Why should there be a time of intense suffering? Because the Lord is going to appear and there's going to be judgment. So if the Lord is going to appear, there's going to be judgment. Why do we have to have pain and suffering before that judgment? Let's get to that. To answer this question, we must first understand the purpose of the second coming. Why is the Lord coming to the earth in the first place? Why is he coming? And I'm going to take you to a story, a vision that John saw in heaven. Do you remember that in the book of Revelation, the first three chapters are about messages to the churches? Actually, chapter two and three, messages to the church, chapter one is just a revelation of Jesus. Then in chapter four, a voice in heaven says to John, come up here. So he gets caught up into heaven. And when he arrives in heaven, what does he see? A throne. He sees those four beasts, then he sees twenty-four elders worshiping, crying holy, 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 the beast crying holy, holy, holy. Then the one sitting on the throne, and it's very, it's just majestic and just mind-boggling. You know, the Old Testament, God said, my name is Yahweh. But here, they don't call him Yahweh, they say the one sitting on the throne has a scroll in his right hand. And he stretches out and he says, who is worthy to take up the scroll and release the seals on the scroll, on, on the scroll? And there was found no one in heaven or on earth worthy to pick up that scroll, scroll from the hand of the Lord and open it. What is that scroll? What's that all about? We are going to see how that links in with Matthew chapter twenty-four and Luke chapter twenty-one. Now, we talked about the signs, the things that will be happening, that tied in with the scroll. Okay, so I'll read from Revelation chapter five, verses one to seven. And I saw in the right hand of him who sat on the throne, a scroll written inside and on the back, sealed with seven seals. Then I saw a strong angel proclaiming with a loud voice, who is worthy to open the scroll and to lose its seals? And nowhere in heaven, nor on earth, or under the earth, was able to open the scroll or look at it. So I wept much because no one was found worthy to open and read the scroll or to look at it. But one of the elders said to me, do not weep. Behold, the lion of the tribe of Judah, the root of David, has prevailed to open the scroll and to lose its seven seals. And I looked and behold, in the midst of the throne, and of the four living creatures, and in the midst of the elders stood a lamb as though it had been slain. Heaven's seven swords, seven horns and seven eyes, which are the seven spirits of God, sent out into all the air. Then he came and took the scroll out of the right hand of him who sat on the throne. So here you are, the identity of the person who took the scroll is obvious, is the lamb who had been slain, the lamb who had been slain, and he's of the root of David. So you know who that is, Jesus. And he comes and he takes the scroll out of the hand of him who was sitting on the throne. Now, what's he going to do with that scroll? Let's read about it. Now I saw when the lamb opened one of the seals, and I heard one of the four living creatures saying with a voice like tender, come and see. And I looked and behold, a white horse, he who sat on it had a bow and a crown was given to him, and he went out conquering and to conquer. You remember that one of the signs was going to be what about wars and rumors of wars? When you opened a second seal, I heard the second living creature saying, come and see, another horse fiery red went out. And it was granted to one, to the one who sat on it to take peace from the earth, and that people should kill one another. And there was given to him a great sword. In, in Matthew and in Luke, one of the signs was that the love of many will grow cold because iniquity will abound. People will become mean towards each other. Here, what's happening? The seal is broken and that's what happens. Now I've got at the table here showing you four horses and the horsemen that come out and the, the consequence. The third horse was a rider with scales, and that related to famine. Which is found in Matthew twenty four and Luke nineteen, Luke twenty one, sorry. Then there was a pale green horse, whose name was Death. And the Bible says that he, this particular horse rider, when he came out, he brought the sword, famine, the plague, none of pestilence or epidemics, and wild beasts, all of them together. You see what I said about the birth pains? As the birth pains, as the time draws nearer, the time of giving birth draws nearer, the contractions become more frequent and more intense. And here you can see the same phenomenon here. The first one, it was just about wars and, you know, rumors of war. The second one, people being mean to each other, wicked. Then famine comes in, and then in the fourth time, everything is mixed together. Intensification. But I've somewhat explained to you why all of this must happen. That scroll is the title deed of the earth. The Bible says the earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof. And when you go to the Old Testament, what you do discover is the God is angry with the way people are treating the earth, never mind the people, the earth. He let the Israelites go into exile for seventy years so that the land would rest. And the Lord is unhappy with the way people are living on earth, the, the way, and the way they are treating the earth itself. And the, the scroll And the, the scroll is the title deed to the earth. And the Lord stretches out his hand. Now you remember the person that should have been able to reach out and claim the scroll from God's hand, you know who that person should have been? Adam. Was, was the first person that the Lord created the earth and gave him, gave it to. But he fell to get, and together all of us. So there was no one in heaven, no one on earth, that's why Jesus had to be human. To gain the right to take that scroll from the hand of the Father. And he breaks the skill, the seal. To read the content of the scroll. Because that scroll is a title deed. And just ask a how a landlord. Who wants to evict squatters from a property? Terms of the electricity, terms of water. Does different things to make the illegal residents uncomfortable, so that they will leave. But if they want, he will bring. The bailiffs and different, you know, police or whatever law enforcement, enforcement agency necessary, bring them to evict them. So the Lord here is depicted as opening the seals. To read out different pronouncements, which then are. Translated as the, the rider on the horse. Bringing in different challenges to people on the air. To warn them about what's coming. The Lord would only do this because other measures are failed. People have preached, people have done everything to get to tell people, look. The Lord is coming, the Lord is coming, but they ignoring it. And in his mercy. He, instead of just bringing final judgment and ending it all. He sends out these different calamities just to force people to think. He did the same thing in the Old Testament. He brought different troubles upon Israel to teach them to turn from their evil ways. And it's only when they didn't do that they were sent out into exile. So the same thing we are seeing here, the Lord is giving people opportunities to repent. And when you read the book of Revelation, chapter five, chapter six, you'll discover that actually. With each one, the Lord is hoping that people repent. And then the Lord says, but for all these things, they did not repent. So then the next one comes, and then well, another one, and then suddenly, they start giving glory to God. Okay, so there's a purpose to all of this, these things are not out of wickedness. Sometimes people put the book of Revelation aside, they don't even want to read it, because they can't reconcile it with the love of God. They can't reconcile it with the love of Jesus. If God is so kind, why would he do all of this? No, this is somebody who says, I don't want you to perish, I don't want eternal damnation for you. I will send preachers, I will send prophets, I will send different people. But if you will not listen to them, I will send you adversity. Maybe, maybe after ignoring the preachers, you would be happy to listen to the adversity. So there will be intensification of suffering on the earth. And when it comes to the fifth seal, it says, the souls of those who had been slain because of the word of God and the testimony of Jesus. These begin to cry out to God. Okay, so maybe just to, to help you, so as you can see, there's a white horse. And there's a, with this rider, and it was wearing a crown, and also had a bow. And this white horse was the one that brought in wars, you know, and nation rising against nation. That corresponds to what's in, in Matthew's gospel. Then you've got this one, the red horse, and this one is with a sword. And that's when, and that represents what happened in Matthew, what is described in Matthew as the love of many growing cold. People betraying and killing each other. Then you have the third horse, the black horse. And this one has scales. And that represents farming, because it's talking about food being weighed, you getting your food in small quantities. Okay, so that's food being weighed, and that's farming, it's talking about rationing of food. Then you have the fourth horse, the fourth horse, the pale green horse, and that is death. And with this horse, you have the clustering together. Of the different calamities that we talked about, they're all coming together. So that's this one, and again, war, pestilence, famine, all of these things clustered together. So what you see then is that Matthew twenty-four, Luke twenty-six, Luke twenty-one, Jesus was answering a question. And he laid it out, but in the book of Revelation, God took all of that and revealed it to John. So that John could see it like a video and see the details. And when you then begin to match what's in Revelation with what's in, in the gospels, it all begins to make sense. And you begin to see that God did this not out of, or God will do this not out of meanness. It is still his attempt to get people saved. And the fifth one is to do with the souls of men being slain. And a source of men who have been slain, and they are crying out to God saying, Lord, how long? How long will you allow this to continue? And that refers to persecution, when you go and read Matthew twenty-four and Luke twenty-one, you discover that's about persecution. Then the sixth seal, there's a great, with a sixth seal, sixth seal, there's a great earthquake. The sun turns black, the moon turns to blood. Or turns to blood red, stars fall like fakes from heaven. The heaven itself recedes, the mountains move. And the reaction of the people is that they hide in caves. And they cry out to the mountains and to the boulders, fall on us, fall on us. Why do we need to know all these things? Because these signs will come to pass, if they happen in our time, we will see it happen, we will see a clustering. Matthew and Luke talk about the same, the sun doesn't give light, moon turns red, and powers of the heavens are shaken. How do I know that the scroll is the title deed of the earth, you know? I came across this teaching, there's this, a pastor from Oxford Bible Church called Pastor Derek Walker. And you can, you can Google him, or you can search for his teachings on, on, on YouTube. Got a blank moment there, on YouTube, and in YouTube, you'll see he's got lots of teachings. And he is one of the best on the subject of, of the end times. He actually brought to my attention this particular concept of the scroll in the Lord's hand being the title deed of the earth. Let's read this passage from the book of Jeremiah. Jeremiah said, the word of the Lord came to me. Hanael, son of Shalom, your uncle is going to come to you and say, buy me, buy my field at Anatoff. Because as nearest relative, it is your right and duty to buy it. Then just as the Lord has said to me, my cousin Hanael came to me in the courtyard of the guard and said. Buy my field at Anatoff in the territory of Benjamin, since it is your right to redeem it and possess it. And possess it, buy it for yourself. I knew that this was the word of the Lord. So I bought the field at Anatoff from my cousin Hanael and weighed out for him seventeen shekels of silver. I signed and sealed the deed, had it witnessed, and weighed out the silver on the scales. I took the deed of purchase, the sealed copy containing the terms and conditions, as well as the unsealed copy. And I gave this deed to Baruch, the son of Meriah, the son of Mahasiah, and in the presence of my cousin Hanael. And the witnesses who signed the deed, and of all the Jews sitting in the courtyard and of the guard. Jeremiah thirty-two, six to twelve. So what are we talking about? Jeremiah received the word of the Lord, the Lord told him to buy plot of land. And the reason why the Lord told him to buy the plot of land was just to prove to him that this, he, the land of Israel. That even though they were going to go into exile, it would still belong to Jews. And so to prove to Jeremiah that this is true, tell him buy land. Because Jeremiah thought, why would I buy land when you're telling me that the whole place is going to be destroyed? And, and they were going to be carried off into other countries. The Lord said, no, this is proof that you're going to return, but please notice the procedure, they had two scrolls. The, the deed, it was a scroll, okay? And there was a sealed copy and an unsealed copy. The unsealed copy showed, is like a public ledger, I can, you know, public record. Anybody can read it and see, oh, this land belongs to Jeremiah. But in case something happened, and maybe the sealed copy, the unsealed copy got missing. Or somebody went and altered it or something, there was a sealed copy. Which could then be, so the person who owned the land would have the sealed copy. And they will come, they will break the seal in front of everybody, open it, and then we would know the truth. So Jeremiah had the sealed copy. That sealed copy, this, so that's why the Bible sometimes leaves these stories there, and we are like. They don't make any sense, why do I need to know about all this procedure? What, what is the spiritual implication? Well, guess what? The Bible is a hyperlinked book. That detail taken and used in a different section of the Bible, in this case, the book of Revelation. So that is the scroll, and that is the reason why we see Jesus. Their whole ceremony of Jesus coming, taking that scroll, opening it, and then things happen, okay? So, let's see how we're doing for time, yeah. So. So far, what we've seen is that a time of reckoning is coming. When. As we, you know, we are all going to stand before the, the judgment seat of Christ. By the way, the judgment of believers is going to be different from the judgment of unbelievers. If you don't know Christ, you have something to be afraid of. If you know Christ, you don't have much to be afraid of. The Bible says, we are not of the darkness that the day should take us by surprise. We are supposed to be ones that look up to heaven and say, come, Lord Jesus, come. The whole world will mourn when they see him coming. But we are supposed to rejoice when we see him coming. So all of these things, they are not, there's not, nothing here to frighten you or to frighten me. There are things here just to remind us that there's going to be a day of reckoning. And that if we also love and care, the people are, for the people around us. We want to make sure that they will escape this day of reckoning, okay? So I think I'm going to round up here, because there's a lot of information. But this is the foundation, this is the, the starting point from which we will then launch. To then explore different aspects of this coming of the Lord and the different events that will happen. Why they will happen, the implication for us, okay? We haven't talked about a rapture today, okay? What I've talked about so far is really the time of the end. At the end, there will be what we call the, the second coming of Jesus. At the end of the sixth seal, there's a seventh seal, and then the coming of the, the Lord. So as you can see, there is a gradual progression, there will be gradual progression. We will actually see that the time is drawing near, okay? But at the same time, the Bible says, no one knows the day nor the hour. And that it's going to happen at a time that you and I don't think it's possible that it will happen. In fact, we will not be thinking, ah, no, no, and then it will suddenly happen. How is that possible? How is it possible that the coming of the Lord will be preceded by clear signs? So that we will actually know that it's, it's at the very door. At the same time, the Bible says, of that day and hour, no one knows. And that it will be like the days of Noah, people were eating, drinking, giving in marriage, and then suddenly, it happened. These are some of the two things that we're going to be looking at. And that's when the concept of the rapture is going to come in, okay? So I'm going to stop here, I hope you were all able to hear what I was saying. Um, I'm sorry that the sharing didn't work out as I thought it, it would. But let's, um, let's stop here and see if anybody wants to make a contribution or maybe ask a question. Silence. Okay, I'm going to come to you.
One of the seals was broken, there was silence in heaven.
Yes. Fred, you want to say anything else about that?
Sorry, I didn't know, I had the silence and I was just, I didn't even know I had clicked the, uh. The speaker, anyway. Yeah, that, that's a great teaching and, uh, very, very, um. Uh, refreshing to know, as you said, most people shy away from that. But, um, that is all we should look forward for. Uh, sorry, look forward to. Um, and then, um, this should really be a, a something for Christians to rejoice over. And as we keep this, hopefully it makes us purify ourselves whilst we look forward to this. So it may sound like hopelessness to the lost. But to the believer, when this trouble starts, they should know that your redemption is near.
Amen.
So we don't, um, have the same disposition like the law, so we shouldn't shy away from it. But rather, look forward to it with joy and anticipation. And encourage believers not to shy away from it. One reason we shy away from this is because the love of the world is still in us. So, um, if, if, if some of these things scare you and put you off. It means you still love the world and the system in it, and you still want things to go on. At least it's one sign that you are not very heavily minded, and you pray to God to help you come out of that mindset. Uh, that is all I want to say, thank you.
Amen, thank you, thank you for that. What about the, your take, what's your take on the, the seal that was broken? When the seventh seal was broken, there was silence in heaven, what, 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 what was that all about?
Oh, no, when, when you said silence, then, you know. So I just added that to it.
Okay, so that was the breaking of the seal, yes. All right, good, um, thank you, thank you for kicking us off. So, um, who wants to go next? Irene, you had questions on this subject, um, and, um, I wonder if this has provoked even more questions? So whether you have something to add to it? Silence, you are, you are smiling there, I can almost see your face.
Okay, um, Uncle Ben, this is in your phone, a bit tired. But in you, get into a couple of understanding. And based on the links between Jeremiah buying the field that Anatoff. And comparing it to the tribulation, there's one similarity I didn't really understand between that.
Yes.
I understand that the similarity for that was when Jeremiah gave Baruch, son of Meriah. The seal, similar to how Jesus took the scroll for the right hand of him who was seated on the throne. But there's those certain things that I couldn't really understand about that.
Okay. Okay, so what I would say is that. When you are drawing comparisons between passages in the Bible. It's important not to draw a direct comparison between every single element. Because if you do, then you will miss the message. So the way, the Bible is not to be, and you know, um, approached that way. The, that's why I call the Bible like a hyperlinked book. So like, if you see when you're on internet, you see, you come across a hyperlink. You click on it and it takes you to another page, and there might be a link there, you click on that and then it takes you to another page. That's how sometimes the Bible is, so something is mentioned there. And then it's mentioned again somewhere else, but when it's mentioned somewhere else, there's new information that is added there. And that's because the, the, the first mention is only bringing your attention to something. It doesn't carry the whole message. So when you are making a comparison between two passages. There is always, there's a need for a little bit of caution not to think that every element you find in one. not to think that every element you find in one passage is also going to be found in the other person. Because what often happens is that there is one element there or something there that God is bringing your attention to, so that he can use that to teach you even some new things. So in the New Testament, in the book of Revelation, the seal and the seals and the scrolls are mentioned. And they are mentioned because God knows that the scroll has been mentioned before. So he doesn't explain what the scroll is in Revelation. And then the seal is broken. So when you are trying to find out, why is there a scroll? Why didn't he, why didn't God present that whole story in a different form? Why did he present it in a form of a scroll and seals? And then you then need to go and read other passages of the Bible, if you understand it about this. Does that make sense?
Yes, that makes sense.
Good, good. But also, that was a really, uh, a great spot. Well done. Okay, so, um, who wants to go next? Anyone else with contributions or a question?
I have a question.
Yes.
But I, I, I don't know if, um, we have the opportunity to talk more about, um, that, um, the, the book of Revelation. But there's a question that's always, something that always confuses me. You know, when you have forgotten, there's that passage. But when you study the book of Revelation, especially with regards to the twelve tribes, you notice that Dan is not included, the tribe of Dan. So I don't, I wonder if it's a mistake or I, I just don't know why.
I said, that's, that's a good one. I don't think I have the answer yet, but I can study it. I have noticed that as well. But to be honest, it's not the only place that you see that discrepancy. You see that discrepancy in other places where the, the, the tribes are listed and one is missing. And then, but it's still twelve. Then one is missing. And so in the sense that one is missing, but because you've got Manasseh and Ephraim to being treated as two tribes, one is missing. I don't know quite why that is. You know, I don't know whether that is the, the, an error of a scribe copying or, or, or something. I don't know. But it's something I can definitely look into to get some more understanding. There are people who have studied this, this subject in, in great detail. People like, you know, Chuck Misler, uh, he's, he's now going to be with the Lord. But he's, he's got a lot of material on, on YouTube as well. Yeah. But yeah, we'll look into that. Thank you. Any other contributions or questions before we close? Okay, and Arba, anything to add?
Another thing is, I was reading about the fourth and it looks as he, um, verse eight, the sixth verse, he says, "I looked and behold, a pale horse and its rider." Yeah, and the name was that, and he's followed by, so sorry, followed him giving authority over the fourth of the earth to kill.
Yeah.
With us, and with famine, and with pestilence, and by wild beasts.
Yep. Oh, well, well.
And when I read about this, this wild horse.
Oh, you are breaking off, you know, we, we, we're you're breaking off.
Poor, I, I've died. So, I mean, we have to read this seems where we have to read the, go about them. And maybe you might have some insight about what God is saying to us. I think we need to go deeper into it.
Yes. Yes, yes, there's a lot there that, um, to be honest, I used to sort of just skim through this particular part. But as I was preparing for the Bible study, I decided to take my time and understand exactly what each seal actually represents. And that's when I began to see the similarities between what Jesus said and what's written in the, in the book of Revelation. And also, when you read the book of Revelation and the way it is presented, your rider on a horse with a particular color, with a bow and all those, they look really frightening. It looks not right. That's why many people don't like reading the, the book of Revelation. But you've got to remember, John had all of these things given to him, and you have to remember it. The only way you would remember it is if it was given to him in a very graphic way, such that it was not possible to even forget what he had seen. It was not possible to unsee what he had seen. So that's why God made it so graphic like that, okay? But the way the whole things will actually pan out, if God were to describe to somebody who lived two thousand years ago, the coronavirus pandemic, trust me, the description would be more, you know, frightening than what we actually experienced. Okay, because the person would be seeing, and there were, and the millions of deaths, and there were counting bodies each day and every day. Which is true, there was a body count, and it was on our screens. Each day we could see the number of people dead, et cetera. But we who saw it, yes, the coronavirus, and I don't know how it was in Ghana, in some parts of the world, it was frightening. Because the way the lockdown was done, literally, there was no soul on the street, nobody on the street. It felt like end times. And when you turn on every TV channel, there was nothing but a body count telling us how many have died, how many have died, how many have died. So i- i- it was very frightening. Like, can you imagine God showing that to somebody two thousand years ago as a vision? This is what it was going to look like. The way they would describe it, it would look very, very frightening. But it just to let us know that when some of these things are coming to pass, some of us will think, we'll be looking for something more serious, because this won't look really serious, even though over there it's described like that. And then before you know it, suddenly, some of these signs have actually come and gone. Okay, that's why it's, it's good for us to know, as believers, as I said, the end is not fearful. I don't, I don't go to bed worrying about, you know, the coming of the Lord and being left behind. Although it used to be like that, there was a time, because I'd heard so many preachings about how God was coming and the threats and everything. So I used to sometimes have nightmares about Lord arriving and me being left behind. Until I understood the grace of God and I understood the purpose of salvation, I understood the security of the believer, which is, by the way, another topic we'll be talking about. And once I understood that, that gave me the assurance that I needed and made me more relaxed and to be able to enjoy the Lord and to enjoy salvation. You know, to make the most of salvation. At the same time, we want to remember that these things are going to happen. You know, the Lord wants us not to switch off completely, not to think that, oh, we've still got time, you know? And, and just to be off our guard. And that will be some of the things that we'll be talking about, you know, in the, in the coming, in the coming sessions. Yeah. Okay, so, Arba, just quickly, just if there's anything you want to say or share or ask about.
Yeah, really, really.
Good.
I, I I, you know, um, they, uh, not really. I'm just, um, like wondering why, you know, talking about the tribulation. You know, that why, why would we all have to suffer tribulation? As, you know, because if they're very elect or those of firsts who are saved by grace, when these things happen, the famine, the pestilence and everything, which do we dare insight? That is just by worry.
Okay.
And maybe that, that is why the, you know, even pastors, you know, Revelation, the book of Revelation, is about the, talking about the death. It's when someone dies that we quote that one. We had, you know, I mean, that, any pastor, or I've not heard that in a long time. I mean, someone thinking about the end night. And, and using the book of Revelation. But, uh, I mean, just as we were talking about all these things, I was just wondering that why when, when, when it is happening, then we will be looking at things, you know? But somehow we all bear the, some of the consequences, I don't know. But, but that dog, there is something.
Yes.
You know, I've forgotten the exact, but you know, that, that as Jesus about his coming. And he said that you can't be for that generation. And but, I mean, when he was talking to them, that the generation has ended long ago. So I don't know whether, um, he said that exactly, or he was recorded.
Okay.
Or he has come and we have not seen him. I know that as we go along, yes, this will be very interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that question, that question can be answered quite easily. When we understand, you see, that's why I tried to lay the foundation to show you the differences between even Matthew and Luke's account. Okay, so Matthew was a disciple of Jesus. But when he was writing about the story, he didn't do it chronologically. He didn't start, okay, after he had talked about Jesus's birth, he just went straight into Jesus's teaching, in a birth, then baptism, and then teaching. And straight away, sermon on the mount. But when you really go and study those one, they were not necessarily the first things that happened when Jesus started his ministry. Okay, so the different, you know, gospel writers, they took a different approach to write it. And that means we need to interpret what they're writing, you know, carefully. If we just take a statement from Matthew and say, oh, he said this, but look, it doesn't happen. Maybe we are missing the context in which, you know, Matthew placed that particular passage. So there was a need to go and take that passage, which I will do, and I'll bring it to one of the sessions to answer the question. You know, to show you that there is a context to everything that is said. Okay, so when Jesus said, you know, the odd distance, um, this, this generation shall not pass, the odd distance come and pass, okay? There's a context to that, but we will deal with it. Yeah, we will deal with it. Okay, anything, any, any, anyone else before we close? Okay, thank you all very much for, for showing up. So apologies for all the hiccups that we had. As I said, I'm working on us using the different platform. I just want to make sure that Google Meet is actually better than this, that we won't have the same problem of being kicked off. Um, so we will hopefully, once that's been finalized. I wanted us to get it ready for today, actually, but, um, because of a change of location, it was impossible. So when I get back to the UK, I will try to do that and see if we can change the platform. And hopefully, we will have these problems again. Otherwise, you know, have a lovely week, and I will meet again by God's grace next Thursday.